There you go. Call an immediate order, please rise, please. Flight.
The fourth reason to avoid the United States of America and to the Republic of Christians, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item is approval of the agenda, I have one addition, under correspondence, we have a B, an EDA invitation.
I make a motion to approve the agenda with the one addition of correspondence.
I'll support that.
Move and supported to approve agenda with one addition. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. The next item is approval of the minutes for the September 10th meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for the September 10th, 2019 meeting.
I'll support that.
Moved and supported to approve the minutes for the September 10th meeting. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the financial report.
We began a month with $314,253.57 and we took in receipts of $87,831.76 and made disbursements in the amount of $165,176.50, leaving us with an ending balance in the general fund of $236,908.83.
I make a motion to receive the financial report as received.
I'll support that.
Motion to receive the financial report. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Okay, moving on, correspondence, item A. Just a reminder, there's a fall workshop coming up at the county. If anyone wants to go, notify Patty by the 16th.
I sent my through county, but I told them to build a township. Did you get?
Yeah, they'll work it out.
That worked.
Now, we're hoping to have a joint meeting of the ZDA and the planning commission in November. And a planner is going to put on a review and understand site plan training thing.
And they're going to do that here, too.
I know.
Yep.
So, it is what it is.
No, it's good. It's good to get reoccurring training.
Well, we've been yapping at it for 20 years to do that, and they never did it really good, so maybe this will be the time.
I told Joe, I'm going to grill him like a pork chop over there.
Yeah.
So, is that proper?
Oh, absolutely.
No, in the back.
Not in the front.
Okay, if there's nothing further, we'll move on. Item B is the EDA invitation. They're going to be holding a training or a retreat on October 22nd from noon to 4:00 at RISA. So, if anybody plans on going, let me know, because if we get any information, email to us, we'll get it to you. Okay, moving on, old business, park update. Everyone got the last version of the park plan, which is a teeny bit different than the old version, but it's really close. According to our consultant, our primary goal right now should be to approve a master plan for the park. And I didn't, I wasn't crazy about doing it tonight, because I didn't know how much township business we were going to have, and she has a long way to go. So, I got with her, I talked to Chris Bunch also, because we have a letter from him and the packet. And we'd like to set it for the 22nd, have a special meeting for that purpose. And that was good with her. So, I'd like to set it for 6:00.
What, okay, 6:00 P.M.?
Uh-huh. And there'll be two agenda items. One will be the Casco Belleville Park Master Plan. And the second will be liquor inspection. I think we have to get, line up somebody to get with those inspections. So, I didn't have, I just found out last night, we're going to need it, and I couldn't line anything up with the sheriff today. So, hopefully by the 22nd, I can have it on the agenda.
Okay.
So...
So, we're going to have to hire a police officer?
Yeah, but I have no details.
Okay.
I did talk to Chloe, and they said if we get in a pinch, they could do it, but they'd rather we went to St. Clair, because that's in their jurisdiction.
Okay.
So...
St. Clair?
Sheriff's Department.
St. Clair County Sheriff's.
St. Clair County?
Right.
Okay.
So, I tried to get hold of sheriff, the new undersheriff, and the two sheriffs that are in charge of the road patrols. I was unsuccessful this morning.
Didn't call me back.
So, I don't think it's going to be a big deal.
Okay.
We just need to get more approval to do it. We have money in the liquor control fund, so it should not affect the general fund. So, we need to get that going.
So, do you need a motion for this?
Could be on the next agenda.
Yeah, right.
Well, yeah, make a motion to set a special meeting for the 22nd, 6:00 P.M., for the park master plan and liquor control.
Well, all we need is for us to have a meeting. We don't need to have the agenda.
When you do a special meeting, you're supposed to put in there what it's for.
Okay, all right. Then I make a motion to have a special meeting on October 22nd at 6:00 P.M. for the master plan for our parks and rec, and to hire for liquor inspections.
Support. Move and support. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? You guys want to go over anything tonight? I mean, I gave you a copy of the letter I got from Chris Bunch, right?
Mm-hmm. Why did you mean the letter from Chris Bunch?
Well, when we got this, and I talked to Pam, I sent a copy to Mr. Brochut, and I sent a copy to Chris Bunch.
Why?
To get input.
For what?
Because they all know more than I do, that's why.
Well, we hired Ms. Plow to do this work.
We hired her to do what we want.
But the Conservancy was instrumental in us being able to purchase the park.
Her Conservancy? He's not with the Conservancy.
Mr. Bunch is.
Oh, Mr. Bunch is, I'm sorry. I'm thinking of...
The Conservancy put in a lot of effort and bought the land.
Okay, you're right.
So, I think that, and also, that's what they do. I mean, they do good stuff.
I was thinking of somebody else.
Okay. Do you want us to wait until public comments and talk about the meeting Dan and I went to last week up there?
Oh, the trails?
Yeah.
That'd be fine.
Because it's some, what's that?
That'd be fine.
Wait until public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay.
I was thinking of...
Okay. Nobody else has anything on that, we'll move on. Item A, we had a request to use our parking lot for a trunk-or-treat use on October 19th from 4:00 to 7:00 P.M.
I made a motion to approve the use of our parking lot for a trunk-or-treat. I'm not quite sure what that means.
What they do is people come, people come and park their cars.
Let Ms. Tremonti tell it, it's her idea.
Hi, I'm Ms. Tremonti. Me and a lot of the Casco residents got together, wanted to do something for the children, since it's hard to do trick-or-treating. Trunk-or-treat is just, it's a parking lot, they trick-or-treat out of the trunk of the car.
Okay, all right.
It's basic as that.
I kind of thought it was something like that.
Yeah, it's as basic as that, just to use it, and afterwards, we got with the corn maze that they want to participate to, so something for the children.
Oh, that's nice.
Yeah.
All right, well, I make a motion, then we allow the parking lot.
I support.
I had a question.
I support the motion, but I got a question. Are there any liability issues that we need to talk to our folks about?
It's a public parking lot, so...
We're just using the parking lot, not the building?
Not the building.
Nope, we're not.
Great. I see no problem.
It'll be fun.
Always ask.
We can come, you can bring your, open up your trunk, and dress up to do it.
Yeah.
It'll be fun.
Okay, did somebody support that?
Yeah.
Move and supported to allow the truck-or-treat use of the parking lot as outlined. Any discussion? Call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries.
Someone asked me, Casco Township official offers for trick-or-treating on Halloween. Not really.
No, I mean, lights on, it's, I do it, I do it from 5:30, because a lot of the kids here, they'll, they'll trick-or-treat in the township, and then they go to where there's sidewalks and houses.
Yeah.
So, that's what my kids always did. So, and then I reluctantly shut off my lights at about 8:30, because it's, well, it's a school night. It's a, yeah, it's a school night, so, but that's long enough. It's fun.
Okay. Thank you for doing that.
I hope the weather's nice for it.
You do.
Okay, moving on, item B, farmland rental, we do this every year. It's a one-year extension of our current agreement with RC Farms. It's for the exact same amount we got previously. I mentioned in the update. That is fortunate, because farm rentals comes down with the price of commodities, and it's not exactly the best farmland in the county or the township. So, we need approval on this, and I would recommend we do that.
You want to mess with the amount?
Usually do, yep, so we have it for record.
I'll move that we approve the farmland, farmland rental agreement extension for the amount, in the amount of rent, in the amount of $3,501. And with an increase of 8%.
Oh, we saved a lot.
An increase of 8% to $3,221.
$3,221.
Due on December 31st, 2019.
I'll support that.
Move and supported to approve the agreement with RC Farms for the rental of the farmland. Is there any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Pat, yes. Bill?
Aye.
And Colleen?
Yes.
Okay, moving on. Item C, it's that time of year again for snow removal. We have a price from Early Bird Earls, who has done it for a number of years. The price is $1,850, I believe. That's the first increase he's had since 2015. So, we did get contacted by one or two people and see if they could bid on it, but he provides a great service, and we're very satisfied with him. And you don't know if you hire somebody else, if they're going to get it cleaned, or if they're down Detroit working first, as long as he doesn't keep raising the prices. These aren't vastly different than they were 10 years ago, 12 years ago.
This is the thing with snow removal, you can get lucky and not hardly have snow, you're making money, but you get slammed, and you're going to be out there a lot, so, you know. But, okay.
I hit it with the global warming, but it didn't...
It did, Jason.
Well, they actually said it made increased snowfall.
Yeah.
All right. I make a motion to approve the contract for Early Bird Earls for, for a sum of $1,850.
Support.
Move and supported to approve the contract with Early Bird Earls for snow removal for the amount of $1,850. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Colleen?
Yes.
Bill?
Aye.
Yes, Joe?
Yes.
And Dan?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Just kind of a little update on the NEMC. As soon as they get all the bugs out of it, they're probably going to, they may come back and want an increase in member subscriber fees. We got to get the bugs out of it, see what we can do. The payment for the third quarter is supposed to include the tag fees in with our regular check. So then we'll get a pretty good handle on what the .68% is that we never got before. Subscribers are a little more touchy. I got a call into Comcast, and I'm trying to get a breakdown of how many subscribers in our township belong to Channel 6 or AMITM. All the other members, 100% of their subscribers go to AMITM. So, even though we have a large number of subscribers, we're going to, if we can't get it from Comcast, we're going to have to do our best guess, and see what we can come up with. Currently, the, it's supposed to be 50 cents a month per subscriber. But Comcast will not tell you how many subscribers you have. Will not tell you. That's the biggest secret since nuclear fusion, I think, I don't know. So, it's going to be coming. As soon as we get a good handle on the numbers, everybody agrees, they're really on a bare bones budget, so we'll be coming back to you. I just wanted to bring it up for informational purposes, and that's about it. Anita, you want to?
I think you took care of it. There's been, as far as I know, there's been, you know, no new developments since the meeting, so, I think you...
I called Shannon, I was going to call her this morning, but by the time I looked, it was noon. And just to see if there's a shot. She's supposed to break down the viewers, the Channel 6 viewers, in various spots in our township.
Right.
That's what I asked. But I have no idea if they're going to do that or not. So, I'll give her a call tomorrow, bugger a little. Okay, moving on. Item E, computer purchase. We have bid here for two computers from Network. Due to the change in the Windows 10 and Microsoft, it's required. Tried to get you a little list of reasons why to justify it. Talked to another township today, they're replacing, because of this, they're replacing five of them. So, it's not like it's just us, so we're only replacing two.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a different...
That's a different... My computer now is on, I can't shut it off, because my hard drive is failing.
So...
I think you need a new computer.
You think? So, I haven't been able to shut it off for over a week now. So, I definitely need the new computer, but...
I don't know if this is too late in the game to ask, but it looks like the processor in the computer that they're proposing is good for this kind of work, but it's not really the best processor out there, I don't think, and might not be necessary. Better one, the I-7, is like 22 bucks more for that particular processor, for the better Intel processor.
Oh, well...
But my concern is only that if you're going to have to upgrade in the future, will the Pentium work well for that? Or is that limit us, or constrain us to have to get another set of computers?
Pentium, the processing isn't the problem.
But the processor is the problem as systems develop and operating systems come out. The Pentium 7 is much faster, it's a four-core processor. I'm no expert on this, I just did a lot of readings after and tried to figure it out.
It's 22 dollars more?
Yeah, but it may have, it may require other things that are more expensive, too. I don't know. But I don't think so.
I'm going to tell you right now, they give us the lowest price we can get, because...
This is called a budget machine.
Right, that's it.
That budget processor.
That's it. And that's why they got it, we got the price we got.
You like these guys? They do you a good, they do you good service.
Yes, they do.
Maybe that's just the answer.
That's the answer you got.
I don't know, you think that's a legitimate question?
I don't know, you might just ask them. I don't want to hold things up.
If you think we need a faster processor?
I think that, my question is, I think it'll do for you now, and probably for another year, to whatever.
I think...
But would you be better off having something faster that will accommodate whatever new changes come up, because this industry change is so rapid?
I have to agree with you, too.
Yeah. I mean, I've never been so buying a high-end computer.
Well, why don't you, why don't you stop in your office tomorrow and give Jeff a call?
No, you need, yeah.
I just, just give him a call and ask him.
If it would be there.
Maybe 22 dollars gets you a much, much more, you know, larger machine.
You're more than welcome to come in, we'll see if he's at the office.
Would you say, yeah, come on in?
It's really simple questions.
I'm not going to probably be there, because I'm not feeling that great, so, but my deputy will be there.
But then, I mean, if they call, you did, then we, you told us something, we approve.
For 22 bucks, I'd approve it, you could...
What did you say, that it wasn't Intel?
Yeah, this is a two-core, it's fast, it's good for this kind of work, it's not good for graphics, but it's good for what you guys do. But the I-7, which is the high-end now, Intel processor.
I-7.
From what the reviews I read, they said it's 22 bucks more, and has, but you don't need a lot of graphics, so, and this is a budget machine. I'm just concerned about the future.
Yeah, we got, yeah.
Come on in.
I've always supported you getting what you need, to do what you need.
Can you come in tomorrow?
Always, yeah, sure.
And we'll call, you have to, you can talk to them?
That's good.
Anytime.
I'm so far away.
Yeah, you're so far.
Want to see me, you better be in the morning, probably.
Yeah.
I'll come down in the morning.
But we got to take care of that computer.
Yeah, I need, I need to take care of this, this week.
Well, the 22 won't stop us from buying, but that's within our ability.
But I'm not sure that, you know, that there aren't other things that go along with these.
I'm sure, I'm sure they'll agree with you, probably.
They may not.
Oh, they may.
Doesn't hurt to ask, now's the time.
This is it, this is what you need.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. We need a motion on what's on the table.
You want to include the upgrade?
Why don't you, why don't we include enough to cover whatever it might be, not to exceed amount, say, add another 100 bucks in there, and we'll have a not exceed amount, and then he can...
100 bucks for each computer?
Yeah, that probably will cover it.
All right.
1,279.
So, let's authorize 1,379 bucks not to exceed that amount for computers for the office.
Okay. $1,379.
Yeah, that's fine. Could be one for...
I'll support that.
So, that was your motion, then?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay, move and support to approve the purchase of two computers for the amount not to exceed, what'd you say, 1370?
Say 14.
1400?
1,400.
And if it's more, you just authorize it.
Okay.
And Patty, you supported that? Yes.
Because the price quote for the two is 1,079.
Right, so that's...
I did check with another township today, the five they're buying, they're giving them from IT Wright, and they didn't have the amount, but it's more than...
Well, that's a good price for them, I can just...
Okay, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Okay, Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Pat, yes? Bill?
Aye.
And Colleen?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on. Item F, holiday swap, as we do most years. We swap the holiday of Veterans Day for the day before Thanksgiving.
Okay. I make a motion that we swap office hours, the ownership will be open from November 11th, and switch that holiday to November 27th.
Oh, support.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, move and supported to swap the holidays from November 11th and November 27th. Is there any discussion?
I always call that day the day for Thanksgiving, Karen Hulk Day, because she was the one who came out with that. That should be, we should label it Casco Township Holiday, Karen Hulk Day, the day before Thanksgiving.
Yeah, you're right. I have to agree with you.
Okay. We didn't vote yet, did we?
No, we didn't.
Okay. Any more discussion on that? Call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Moving on, payment of the bills.
Make a motion to pay the bills as submitted.
Support.
Move and supported to pay the bills. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Colleen?
Yes.
Bill?
Aye.
Pat, yes? Joe?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on. Citizens' comments, first the board's going to give you a little presentation of the meeting they went to, and then we'll open it up to anybody that's here.
Sure, question about the election on the 5th of November. Are there absentee ballots available for the election?
Yes.
Right here.
We just have to...
Come to the office.
I'll have Jennifer give you the applications.
You'll file them in both of us.
Yeah, the applications.
Yeah, any absentee stuff is through Casco Township. The day of the election, you all got a card in the mail. The actual machine voting is in Columbus. Okay, tell us what you got about the trail thing.
Yes, last week on September 30th, myself, Dan, and Cynthia went up to Sinclair County, they had their master plan for the trails in the county. And it focused on the completion of the Bridge to Bay Trail. I was surprised that north around Port Huron and north to the Sandlot County line, that trail's actually completed, and it's in good shape. The big challenge is completing the trail through like the St. Clair Township areas, the St. Clair area, and actually rebuilding parts of it that are already existing, like in the East China Township area, some of it's kind of...
Falling.
Yeah, needs repair, needs. So, that's their main focus, is to get that done, because they say once they get that, the Bridge to Bay Trail, that will help kind of set the stage to complete Hookin' McComb Orchard Trail with the Bridge to Bay Trail. Although they said they would not stand in the way of it if they get that support. What's that foundation?
Ralph Wilson.
Ralph Wilson Foundation, because there's a big push to have the coast-to-coast trail. They says though, if they get the funds in to do it, they'll be, you know, they won't stand in the way of that, you know?
Yeah.
And they're talking, they're going to be applying for DNR funds to help complete the Bridge to Bay Trail. And I asked a question, because we're going to start developing the park, with that conflict, I mean, are we going to, you know, compete for the same funds? And they said not really. They said they encourage us on our part, because it's going to be right along that, you know, a trail, if they're successful, along Division Road slash Fredmore Highway Corridor. And it's kind of our part to do, because it's not just the hook and land trails, but also water trails as well, so...
Yeah, some of the most interesting things about what they had to say was, you know, there's a lot of not-in-my-backyard feelings about trails and so on. However, it appears at once, from their studies and looking out at what had been done other places like Traverse City... like Traverse City, the resistance fades really quickly because the economic impact is so great. In the Traverse City area, they have a very nice trail system and they have a managing body that takes care of it. It's not governmental, nonprofit, and that's what they're going to try to do here too, for this area. But there's actually businesses that have opened up along the trail because so much business has resulted in tourism from, on the trail. But the biggest thing they said is that they got to, you have to have these long stretches of trail. If you have just little pieces and chunks, it doesn't draw the kind of folks that want to travel the whole trail. They stop along the way, they stay in places, and then they go the whole distance. So, their drive is to try to get some long pieces of this trail done. And from also, another interesting thing, there's a woman, you know, I can't remember her name, but she working, works on water trails. Now, the Ralph Wilson Foundation's putting millions and millions of dollars into trails and apparently has an awful lot of money in the, in their fund that's allocated for putting into trails, but the stock market has been so good that they, what they have, they still have. They start what they started out with. And it's really millions or billions of dollars. And so, but they don't do water trails yet. But she's, she says she's working on them. But we're in a pretty good position with our park, she feels, too, because of the two issues, water trails and the land trail that's probably going to go right across Fredmore Highway. So, maybe from one angle or another, we'll be able to get some real support to develop our park. So, it was a kind of a very interesting meeting. But the economic impact of these trails is really quite profound. I mean, they really bring a lot of money. And they had, they had numbers. It was large numbers. I didn't write them down. I probably shouldn't. But it was real quite impressive.
I was up in Richmond house today and I was talking with Dave Hamilton from Holmes Hamilton Bike Shop. And he was saying, he just recently had a couple from Iowa, bike hauler from Iowa. And they heard that the effort of making the coast-to-coast trail in Michigan. And they said, oh, we're hoping to, you know, get that...
Get it done.
But, um, yeah, and so, it's a good thing, but, um, Miss, on kind of a related thing, Mr. Hamilton, I was telling about the park and his grandfather's farm was right on the corner of Division and Palms. But I said, yeah, our park, we dedicated it. And, uh, so, he's an amateur archaeologist. He was saying, along the Bell River there, they have worked on sites. People lived on the Bell River 10,000 years ago. 10,000 years ago. And, uh, so, he'd be willing to do a presentation before the board, ever, on the archaeology of the area. You know, if you're willing to, you know, entertain that at some time.
Oh.
But he's a fascinating man to talk to.
That's nice.
And, uh, yeah, he's one of the businesses that really benefits all the trails.
The vision for trails in Michigan is really quite extensive. I don't know if anyone was here, but the last, the meeting before this, they explained that there, really, the goal is to have a trail that goes all the way around all of the lakes. It would be longer than the West Coast Trail that goes all the way up the coast of, on the West Coast or the Appalachian Trail that goes along from Maine to Georgia, I guess, or wherever. So, um, and that's really the kind of the vision. And then there's already a trail that runs across the state. It's the, uh, the MTRA, Michigan Trail Riders Association, has a trail. There's two trails, one for bikes, one for ORVs and bikes and hikers. The other one for horses that runs across from Escoda to Empire near Traverse City. And then there's another, this other trail that they're trying to build is from over here and all the way across the state to, I think, near Benton Harbor, I believe it comes out on Lake Michigan. So, Michigan's really a big tourist, a big tourist place. People come to do this stuff, to ride their bikes, you know?
Back in the spring when we had the meeting up at Columbus Township Park, I was talking to Mark Brocher and he was thinking even eventually to have a trail up Grashet for like a Sinclair County loop where you can go up from Richmond, Saint Clair, and Saint Clair up to Port Huron and down to Grashet.
We'll see.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, citizens' comments. Nobody wants to address the board? Questions, comments? We asked for your name, which you don't have to give it if you don't want it. Anybody out there?
Yeah. We like when people ask questions, so...
Well, I'd just like to remind everyone, of course, of the, in, when are you going to, what hours are you going to hold the trunk-or-treat?
The trunk, uh, we're going to set up about 4:00. 4:00 to 7:00. Yeah.
4:00 to 7:00?
Yeah.
Good, so, good. We'll get most of them. And then, um, later in the month, on the 20th of October, is a chili cook-off sponsored by St. James UCC at Perch Point from 4:00 to whenever. That's always a good time. And then on the 28th of October, there is a dance sponsored by St. Paul's, also at Perch Point. And I'm sure if you go out on, on the website, they've got posters all over and invitations all over. It's always a good time. I don't know, I'm not sure what time their dance starts. I think 7:00. But good things to do in Casco, so watch the papers and watch for signs going up all over to advertise these things and go and have a good time. Meet your neighbors.
And the election is?
Uh, November 5th for Anchor Bay Schools and for Richmond Schools. Anchor Bay Schools, you go to the Great Oaks to vote. At Great Oaks Elementary. And for the Richmond Schools, you'll be voting at Columbus Township. I am taking care of all the AVs for Casco Township. Get your AVs in early as I have to get them over to those two places so they can be counted. Don't wait until the last minute to bring them in. Get them in early.
It seemed like a big push for it.
Probably the most important thing that came out when they presented last time at the board meeting was that it's, it's not an increase in what you're paying now. It's a continuation of what you're paying now in millage for the schools. So, it's not going to really cost you anything you're not already accustomed to, hopefully. And it's not like you're going to be hit again.
It's a big push, yeah.
It's a continuation to keep the schools going.
I asked Margaret for a sign, but I think they ran out of them.
Oh, oh.
Or else she placed on the wrong house.
Should've been in yours, I mean...
Well, my neighbor has three of them.
Oh.
So, maybe it's one of them lying out.
Okay, anyone else? If not, we're up to adjournment.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll support that. Moved and supported to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.